Morning, everybody. It's the R.B. United School. Call the Weston County Commissioner, meaning the order for September 2nd, 2025. Would anybody care to give an invitation before we?
I will. Good morning, Father. We just thank you for this beautiful morning. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we go forward and make decisions for our county. Be with all of us, and bless us. In your name we pray.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Were you having an agenda? Is there any additions or changes? Anybody about to bring it up?
Move to per the agenda.
Second. Agenda is written and properly seconded in the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Alright. Well, sure. Mr. Causy, can you hear us? Judge Causy?
I can. Good morning.
Sorry to make you wait. I didn't see you get on there.
No, you're fine. I didn't want to interrupt any business that you have, so.
Good morning to you. I guess the reason we kind of wanted to visit with you a little bit was over the court security order. If you could kind of give us a general idea of what we're maybe looking at. Mr. Jenkins is here for the Sheriff's Department and the full board and our county attorney. We'd appreciate anything you could help us out with.
Certainly. While I'm in the commission, Chairman and members of the commission, really appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. I hope I can answer any questions that you might have. I'll try to make it as simple as I can because if I try to explain things too much, I'll probably get lost in my own thoughts here. We've had a lot of issues over the past few years with court security, not just in the state of Wyoming, but across the country. And one of the things that has come up recently, we have had some legislation and some other things that have drawn attention to the need to emphasize what we can, can't, or should or shouldn't be thinking about doing those sorts of things. And so recently, within the past year or so, the courts have been contemplating those very same things. There were some pieces of legislation and some articles and those kinds of things that have come out regarding the use of firearms and carrying them in certain buildings, et cetera. That has traditionally been something that, at least with regard to what are court rooms and court proceedings, been things that from what we can tell have been subject to judicial control of this with regard to the courts and the court proceedings. And so in an effort to kind of clarify where we stand and what we believe should happen with your art base, the judiciary kind of as a whole, more or less that the district court conference, along with the district court conference, because we are the trial courts, if you will, in the state, sat down, looked at some of these pieces of legislation, looked at our own rules, looked at some of the standards that have been promulgated by the different entities that are now in existence, including our court security standards. And so we kind of crafted an order that really addresses the question of, well, what exactly is it that we're doing and how exactly is it that we should be doing it? And what we did for each and every county, we've done this not only in the six judicial districts, for each of the three counties that we serve, but throughout the entire state of Wyoming, is asked us to come in and say, look, what it comes down to, what our courtroom is, that's easy to define because you generally are looking outside of a room itself. But we do believe that there are some areas outside of that. For example, in the courtroom there in Weston County, we understand that it's essentially the entire third floor. Because we've got our own courtroom itself, we've got leading up to a courtroom, there's a hallway, there's a, at the end of that hallway, there is the clerk's office. There's kind of a choke point, if you will, where the stairs and the elevator converge. And so in essence, we thought, well, we need to clarify exactly what we believe that we have the authority to kind of control, and more importantly, what we believe we can kind of clarify for our law enforcement partners. In this particular case, obviously, we've got Mr. Jenkins and we've got Sheriff Cohort, the other sheriff, a bunch of other folks that we've kind of consulted with. The court security order isn't looking at increasing any sort of obligations of those folks. It's simply looking at clarifying what do we believe that we can kind of order and be able to assist all the folks there who provide security day in and day out, who protect all of the folks that come and use those courtroom facilities and indeed use the courthouse, at least with regard to judicial functions. And so that in essence is kind of the starting point of this law.
And is this, I would assume would expand beyond just the days that you're in court, this would be five days a week? Correct?
Technically, it would be five days a week in terms of, for example, if you go outside of the courtroom right now, you'll notice that there are signs that say, you know, you're not allowed to have weapons and those kinds of things brought into the courtroom. They would still apply regardless of whether or not you get someone technically there. We're not looking at increasing the obligations of the sheriff's department of the county or anyone else. We're simply saying, this is what we believe the region ordered, and this is what we believe will assist our law enforcement partners in being able to enforce all of that.
And forgive me, heard guys are here too. I forgot to mention that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, in reading this, so it also mentioned the basement area where the... So is that something that you're not quite as focused on at this point in time? It's more just the upstairs?
Well, when it comes down to being able to kind of protect court operations, there then I guess now is a bit of a rough. If we have court security approach that there's somebody there on, I guess, off chance we're having a court hearing and somebody's needed. It's kind of a hard thing to say, well, you're not going to respond if a person needs some assistance. Particularly if we've got a person who's giving them difficulty, so to speak. We're not trying to use this as some sort of a cudgel, if you will, or anything else. We're simply authorizing the folks that we have to kind of do the things that we think that they already ordinarily do on a day-in, day-out basis. Don't know if that makes sense, Mr. Chairman, or not, but that's in essence where we're coming from.
No, it makes sense. I guess my, I don't mean to talk for everybody. My biggest concern would be if we have to hire another individual to watch that other floor in the event that the person on the top floor is consumed with whatever's happening there. Would probably be my biggest concern at this point.
Yeah, and our intention is not to require any of those additional hirings or anything else. If you recall, there were some documents that we shared a while back. We had the National Center for State Courts put out and do an assessment. And that assessment was on the courtroom itself, chambers and all of those areas, on the clerk's office. They really did an entire assessment, if you will, on the whole building. And one of the things that they really did recommend is that we do need additional personnel. We understand from the judiciary's perspective that money didn't grow like trees. Wish it did, as many trees as you gather on the courthouse and you can find some twenties or hundreds or something over there. But in all seriousness, everyone understands that. And we are very fortunate that they've provided us with what you have. We appreciate the dedication of everyone else that comes in, Sheriff Cohort's coming in, we've got other folks coming in to help. We don't intend on trying to make that any more difficult. We simply want to give them the authority if they need it, that we've got a court order, you can enforce it, you can back it up. And so to the extent that, again, our law enforcement partners need that kind of authority when they're doing their day-in, day-out job, we thought we're getting there. But the intention is not to ask our demand or anything like that, additional folks, even though we all recognize that it'd be awesome if we could get that.
Understandable. Anybody have a question, Mr. Causy? Marty, you got a question for us?
This is Marty Urban. Thanks for getting on with us and so to clarify a few things. I guess what my question is, I don't really fully understand the need for law enforcement to have this order. This order, I mean, wouldn't that just, and I know the word assumed, I got that. But this is an uncomfortable order. Considering the money that we put through at the quest of the Supreme Court to remodel everything. It's a 115-year-old building. I'm curious, what's the teeth behind this piece of paper?
In terms of the practical effect, so right now, if you have an officer who is trying to enforce anything in that area, the question is how do they manage to do it? And I think that they, from what we've heard from law enforcement agencies around the state, they generally vindicated they did not feel as though they had any authority to act in situations that they felt like they needed to act. This order does give them at least a starting point to be able to enforce things through such mechanisms as contempt of court, through other kinds of mechanisms that may be available. So in essence, what it does is it allows law enforcement, again, to use what they effectively should be able to use, if you will, to make sure that their security operations are ongoing, that they've got the legal coverage, if you will, that they would need. That's what this order does.
In ways of, I guess I was looking at Mr. Causy, that, or Judge, I called it. Is this kind of a way to, I understand that open carry or concealed carry is now pretty widespread, if anyone's stayed on eye on it. I mean, the laws have changed on that. Is this a kind of a way to protect the areas of the courtroom slash or court activity kind of happens? And your guys' ability to control that a little bit more? I guess by setting these stipulations there that these areas of the courthouse are kind of off limits in regards to those.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nupe Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Setting these stipulations there that these areas of the courthouse are kind of off limits in regards to those packing a firearm or something dangerous.
Yes, at least in part. And again, it's designed to provide the clarity that folks might not have otherwise.
So is it my understanding then that we have to inform the public not to walk into this courthouse with a gun?
No, in terms of the, if people want to walk into the first floor, the second floor, those kinds of things, they can certainly do that. When it comes down to judicial operations, which would effectively be the third floor and then with the basement, there are restrictions on that.
Yeah, I think this floor is off limits.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and I hope we were trying to, so if you go to each and every courthouse in the state of Wyoming, you don't notice that there are no two that are the same. If, for example, you were to take a trip down to Laramie County, and I don't often cite to Laramie County, but that's a different ballgame, because some San Chin does things differently than they do in the rest of the state. But in all seriousness, if you were to go down to Laramie County right now, if you attempt to go up to where the court is operating, with clerk's office, the court rooms themselves, chambers, anything like that, you have to pass through security. And that security effectively is deputies who are sitting at a station. That station is manned 24/7 by at least two deputies, based on my experience. Those deputies have you pass through a magnetometer. They also have you pass through or use an X-ray machine on any bag that you are bringing up. They have you turn over or cut off any cell phones. Unless you're a council, you're not permitted to have any of that. And there are all kinds of restrictions. And that's just Laramie County. If you go to other counties, it's a bit different. We do not by any stretch propose any of that here. What we are trying to do is to give, again, the county sheriff's department over in Weston, as well as over here in Campbell, or even in Crook, the authority to exercise what they may need to exercise should this matter actually come to fruition or come to a head. So it's more of, again, we're not seeking to impose any requirements on them other than they've got the authority to act and let's be diligent and vigilant.
I'm terrible uncomfortable with this. I am terrible uncomfortable with the statement of this. I fully understand the third floor. I think we all do. But there is other reasons that occurs downstairs, even if you wanted to visit the vault. Do you have to go through a search to go visit the vault? The men's room? And this is where I'm getting, you start to put an overall picture, and that seems to be what happens. Is then, but it says we have to, and I just am not comfortable with that. If you want to do something with the third floor, even though we spent a lot of money to get that to a point where, as your rules in Rule 107 says, "suitable", we had influence of the Supreme Court for "suitable". We got to that agreement on what "suitable" was. So third floor, I got it. But your circuit court, I'm having a problem with.
Madam Chair, one thing...
I'll be a man.
One thing we can lay down doing is that hallway that goes down to their actual office door, there's that short hallway. One thing we could possibly look at is putting a secure door right across the opening there. That would secure that whole back area, so if anybody is downstairs, they're not standing right outside the clerk's office door. So they can move freely within their office and their files room that's right across from there. That is a possibility. I mean, a door with an access is, would be a small feat, but that might be something the courts might be okay with, or you guys might be okay with helping leave the basement portion, maybe?
Is there a door there, is it?
No, it's just the opening without a door.
Who would do the door?
I've never seen a door in there.
Mr. Chairman. With regard to the directing of this order, when it came down to where the circuit court's operations are, again, it was kind of relied upon what Judge Bush's description was. If that description is overly broad, then we can narrow it. The intention was not to include areas other than where we're talking about for the clerks, as Mr. Jenkins is getting at right now. Again, not intending on making this too broad. If we need a more apt description or we need to somehow limit it, by all means, let us know.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Is the, I mean, have you guys looked at, is there potentially, if there's changes that we may have to make? Is there funding maybe available that you guys have looked for, maybe?
With regard to the funding, what we've had, and you probably have seen some of the emails that we've sent out, at least the court security folks had. We did have some funding, if you will, that we were looking at in order to try to get any of that funding, at least through the judiciary's request. What we were informed is we need to have projects that were kind of already up and running. We need to have an idea of when they were going to be completed, and we need to kind of not just ask for a wish list, if you will. We sent out some documents regarding potential costs and those sorts of things. And then we visited with Sheriff Cohort, as well as the other sheriff and other folks to try to get some idea of how much those costs would be. When it came down to those costs, I have submitted those. In terms of any doors or anything else, I know that there was some dollar loss that were indicated. At least at the time, my understanding was that we weren't looking at pursuing any of that. If we are going to be pursuing that, then I think that's certainly something that we can look at for and ask, either through the judiciary or other ones. But I also know that because this is a historic building, we've got a whole bunch of hoops that we have to jump through to get those sort of things done. We completely understand that as well.
Mr. Chairman, you have a fire marshal problem too. You'd have a fire marshal problem. I mean, if you block that door, we just would have to get that all worked out. But I'm not comfortable.
Anything else for Judge Causy? Questions?
I do appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you very much for kind of giving us a heads up on some of this stuff. I have some purview to it with Officer Deputy Jenkins, or Under Sheriff Jenkins. But it's nice to let...
We're madam, Chairman.
Let everybody else kind of have an idea of what's going on, so what we might be looking for.
And we appreciate it. As I indicated, I don't know what best language will work for some of these things. This is what the intent basically is, though. We're not looking at having everybody searched when they're trying to come into the courthouse to do business with all the other entities that they're trying to do or to use the bathroom. Never the intention whatsoever. And certainly, we don't want all of it. In any way, it seemed like that's what we're trying to do. We're just trying to make sure that when we're dealing with some of these court operations, that we can, again, give the folks the authority that they need. We can do so in a manner that obviously is not going to impact anyone else's life any more than we have to. So we do appreciate it, and if there's additional language you think, by all means, let us know. Particularly if we can kind of clarify exactly where we're talking about. If there's fire marshal or other issues that we're going to have to work through, there's a whole host of that today that you guys know better than we do. But we appreciate it.
This is Commissioner White. I do have one question. Say with this order there, say we have an incident, somebody slips in there with something, and a third party gets injured or something. Do we become liable because we didn't enforce this order?
I would talk to your county and cross-beating attorney about that. That's more of a legal, and I know to a degree, all of this is kind of a bit of a legal analysis. But when it comes down to those kinds of things, again, I'd probably advise it with Mr. Spock and those folks about that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate everything.
You're very welcome. Like said, always a great privilege to be able to speak to you, and thank you for all that you do. We don't say that often enough, but we do appreciate it. Thank you. I guess I'm your Sheriff Jenkins now. I didn't want to actually call you Mr. Jenkins, but in all seriousness, thank you everyone. Okay.
Nobody should know.
Thank you all. Did I say Jenkins?
Yes, you did. I didn't know.
All right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So I think the third floor is probably usable. It's the question of that bottom floor that we've caused issue. And you're thinking something just this side of the elevator?
No, I can just, right at their window, you have that small hallway. I'm thinking if we could just put a door there, that totally encapsulates them.
And up here?
Oh, up here.
Yeah. The magnetrometer or whatever.
Yeah, it'd be just that side of the elevator.
And maybe a door downstairs might solve a lot of problems.
I know, and I know the other issue, not necessarily an issue, but the court security we do have, she is only part-time, and that is paid out of our own budget, so it's not even a budgeted position. So maybe something in the future we're going to have to look at.
Other one with the new restrictions or we're backing off of the restrictions. Is the wording on that courtroom only, or does it incorporate surrounding areas? Is that up to the discretion of, what is the wording on the latest statute for that? I would be interested.
I don't know.
I feel like we're kind of, we could be bumping that line a bit.
Would you like to know what the wording of Rule 107 is? Now, that's not the rule. It's Order Adopting Rule 107, Uniform Rules of District Courts in the State of Wyoming. Under that structure, the existing statutes provide that county authorities are responsible for courthouse facilities and manpower to ensure the security of court rooms. Statute 18, yeah, statute 182103 is each county shall provide and maintain a suitable courthouse.
So when you say courtrooms, does that also mean offices of downstairs?
That's what courts being owned, not a courtroom.
Michael, was this something that you looked over, and is this something, this stuff in red?
Yeah, I looked over a bit. I think the security for the clerks probably is encapsulated in that courtroom issue, because they do have serious security concerns with, because people's, Ricky see, Ricky and I see people usually on their worst days, so I would, I would tend to think that that clerk's office is included in the courtroom portion.
With all due respect, those two offices there see some pretty ticked-on fan activity.
We've had to respond to a few up here, so.
All vouchers I have are behind.
So I'll show you my, this is what ticks me off. I tear up now, that's going to assist me. Begin.
Yeah.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnut. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
You have a, excuse me, all of them. So, Chair, would you like to make a motion so you can read off your warrants?
I would move to approve vouchers excluding my vote from warrant number seven-four through four-six, seven-four-three-two-five, seven-four-two-seven-eight, seven-four-three-two-four, seven-four-three-three-one, seven-four-three-two-eight, seven-four-three-three-zero, and seven-four-three-one-six.
And I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, add to that motion to exclude my vote from warrant number seven-four-two-six-seven.
Got a motion properly seconded with Commissioner Gordon excluding himself from all airport vouchers, and Commissioner even excluding herself from airport vouchers. Any discussion? What was the favorite? Please say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Just to get a note after I opened up those on my table. I did update on the Erpman easement. I did add landlord Ted Erpman was also in attendance to discuss his ongoing concerns. I did add that, other than what I had sent last week.
Yeah, we, we have two different deals out there. There's an easement, and then there's a grant of deed, so we kept them separate somehow. Which I would like to add that to the next agenda, if you could, because I want to see if I can get Cali Hill to maybe come on the issue with this, or somebody from their office.
Uh-huh. Under grant discussion, put, okay, behind Erpman indicated a motion, put previously passed on this subject instead of has already been made. Okay, let's get that one. On the Barton Road update, Chairman Todd discussed the resolution presented Barton Road as an, as a legally established county road. And then, got that one? Commissioner Comet, where it said joint corporations, it was a joint judiciary. Fourth line down, in the middle. And on the sixth line, it was Redbeet Road, not Sweetwater Mountain.
Got any other, right?
Got it all, like that.
Anybody else? Motion to approve minutes amended, unloved.
Second.
Motion properly seconded, any discussion? Could catch our upper right hand. Hold your hand. All who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You called me chairman of the...
You have a pattern on your... How about your weekend?
It didn't interest me, I guess.
Why are you laughing?
It's a Bud Light day.
Obviously, you're in a target. Oh, man.
You weren't wearing...
I mean, oh, woman.
You weren't wearing your bro that day.
Well, he gave me my gingerbread, so I know.
Mr. Chairman, I would to approve the AP South... Wait a minute, the payroll one, though. Sorry, got on the wrong line. Who did that? Second.
Well, good, but I don't think anybody else has seen this yet. We just passed him down there, he said he was still looking, I'll bring him this way.
My kid, though, that means it's prom, usually. Yeah.
So I'll take your motion.
Still got a motion on the table?
Yeah. And that's not bad.
Let me have a look at him, maybe that looks more.
I looked at everything, I stood near it, I looked at it.
Sorry.
Got a skirt on you, and you all messed up.
Well, I was just looking at Baron, I guess I...
That's what happens when you don't know who you are.
Follow me. Fluidity is just a little...
Every, every meeting, it seems like one thing just takes over.
Well, it's a Monday, I'm a Tuesday, and those are terrible.
I already have a motion on the table, we're not doing it.
Hold on, I'm your motion on the table, if you want to do another one.
She was telling me I got to do them.
Look them over and send them back, or whatever.
Three things going on at one time.
I look them over, I set them down, rack them up.
Robert would be so pleased.
He's dead, that works that well for us.
Got a motion to approve, second, properly seconded, to approve payroll and vouchers. Any discussion? Favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Close.
So I will send this back for signatures.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
With this correction.
Oh.
Or let's wait that.
Don't correct that, you're alone. With the correction, yeah, good idea.
With correction.
Is that okay with the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, got a motion properly made to approve the executive session minutes with one minor correction. All in your favor, please, per discussion. All who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, thank you. Send these back your direction.
You want them?
No, I'm just going to make, so we can have everybody looking over, to make a motion to approve the collections for the county clerk, clerk of the district court, public health, sheriff, and airport.
Do you need to give any numbers?
I'll have the numbers all right here.
This here?
You want, you want the dollar amounts? You want a second with the dollar number?
But I think it would be appropriate for the public.
Yep, I'll redo my motion. Make a motion to approve the collections of the airport, amount of two hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents. Collections for the Weston County Sheriff for five hundred and eighty dollars, zero cents. Weston County Public Health for two hundred and twenty-five dollars and no cents. For the county clerk's office, amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. For the county treasurers, for the amount of eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents. And for district court, an amount of one thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventy-eight cents.
That was the, um, then, sure, sir. Those were ours, but we, I just gave a copy of that.
Okay.
So there wasn't one.
Okay. Was not for the treasury, it was for venue inspections out of the clerk's office, for the amount of...
Eight hundred.
Motion properly seconded for the above collection report and their values. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read, excuse myself, my signature on the collections from the airport.
Okay, thank you. All who favor, motion on table, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Going to take a lot more than a five-person economic development board, or the seven-person city council, or the five-person county commissioners, or, or even the hospital board. The, the public, at this point, really needs to have a stake in the game, and needs to come forward and to have some honest discussions and some ideas, and, and even more than just the community, I'd say, the younger people, those younger people in their twenties that are in Newcastle and Weston County raising their kids, those people that don't want to leave, those people that want their kids to grow up in Newcastle and graduate an NHS doggy just like they did, those are the people that are going to have to step up and come forward and, and offer some solutions and do a little bit of soul-searching and becoming a more active member in the community.
Okay, moving on to Chairman's signature on one Y O two, the MOA with the national opioid settlement.
This is another one.
Deadline October eighth, twenty twenty-five. This is a different company or whatever that is.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
If you emailed this, I don't know, does anybody want, can you hand it down, or anybody? There are no takers. So, as pleasure of the board, do we want to participate in another national opioid settlement, secondary manufacturer for the bookway funds? Which we did, but a month ago, from another company. I'd make a motion to authorize the Chairman's signature on one Y O two, MOA, national opioid settlement. Motion properly seconded, and there are no decisions. Motion properly seconded, is there any discussion? Any man in favor, please say aye.
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 Close.
No.
Heard. And moving on to the board's signature on resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five nineteen, amendment to twenty-five twenty-six budget cycle. Pursuant to Wyoming State Statute sixteen four one thirteen, the budget of the general fund may be changed by a resolution of the governing body. Therefore be it resolved by the governing body of Weston County that the twenty-five twenty-six county budget be amended by adding ten thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents to general miscellaneous insurance for unanticipated revenue. Be it further resolved that the twenty-five twenty-six county budget be amended by adding the ten thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents to that general miscellaneous insurance. Whereas Board of Commissioners resolves, resolves to amend the twenty-five twenty-six budget within effective date, September second, twenty twenty-five. This is, the last, is this the last amendment, Chuck, for now? Anybody wanna put their eyes on it?
Oh, your signature probably. So this is our last insurance payment?
I believe so. I believe all the contractors you paid out to.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for the board's approval of the board's signature on resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, amendment to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Say again. Very good. Motion properly is seconded to, for the board's signature on resolution twenty-five nineteen. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. A little more clarification on the unanticipated revenue? So this is, this is mine, that we were not anticipating collecting? Not a bill.
It didn't come in prior to the budget cycle.
So it's unanticipated to the budget, so we're going to amend the budget with this amendment, so it's unanticipated. It's making the budget go up.
In addition to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of a motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. On to resolution number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five twenty, establishing the Barton, also designated Weston County Road seventy-five. This one's been a long time in the making. Okay, Weston County, Wyoming desires to establish a public road commonly referred to as Barton Road, but also designated as Weston County Road number seventy-five. Along the route described by the centerline description of said road, attached here to as exhibit A and made a part hereof. And where, whereas spanning from two thousand four to two thousand seven, all landowners whose lands this road passes through have provided written consent to the use of their land to establish a public county road. Which written consents have been filed in the office of the county clerk of Weston County, Wyoming, and said consents were so filed in the office of the county clerk of Weston County, Wyoming, spanning from oh four to oh seven. And whereas pursuant to Wyoming State Statute, section twenty-four three one oh eight, this public county road may be established by the order of the Board of County Commissioners of Weston County, Wyoming, without the appointment of a viewer or any other proceedings. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Weston County, Wyoming finds this road is of sufficient importance to be open and traveled as a public county road. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Weston County, Wyoming, that hereby ordered that Barton Road also designated Weston County Road number seventy-five, and which is described on the plat, which is in plat cabinet two, sleep nineteen, the description of which is required pursuant to Wyoming Statute twenty-four three one oh nine, which is attached here to as exhibit A, is hereby established as a public county road, and said county road is hereby established as of April twenty-third, two thousand and seven. This public county road shall be sixty feet wide, being thirty feet on each side of the centerline described on said plat. To short, this order shall take effect immediately upon passage of this resolution, made retroactive to the date that the last landowners owning the road for the purpose of establishing said county road filed their consent, that date meaning April twenty-third, two thousand and seven. Anybody here to see this one if they have it? So, in a general overview, we, all the ducks were put in row in two thousand and seven and completed, except for, the resolution was never created to formally establish it. So, that's what we're doing, if the board chooses to.
Only question I have, there probably wasn't an appointment of a viewer.
An appointment of a viewer back then, all I saw was.
Did you read the minutes to see if there was an appointment of a viewer?
There was the consents, and then there was the plat, so there probably was.
I bet there was a viewer.
And I just noticed that there's a typo in the heading. I need to put, whoever that last, establishing the Barton, forgot the word.
Right, I know.
Oh, did you? Okay, mine, mine missed it.
I think he's looking around here.
It's establishing the road.
Establishing the Barton. Also designated Weston County.
But this just says it can be established without the appointment of a viewer, so you have the consents, you had the consents, wish it was more clean. Yeah, the consents of two thousand and seven, that's why. My thought was to make it retroactive.
Can we get that corrected so we can form something?
Yeah.
So, where it says appointment of a viewer, should that be viewer?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any other things in there? So, with, should we put, doesn't need to say with the appointment of a viewer?
But that just said, this just says you guys can establish it by resolution.
Without, basically.
Doesn't say whether or not.
Whether or not they did it or not, yeah.
But that just said, this just says you guys can establish it by resolution.
Without, basically.
Doesn't say whether or not.
Whether or not they did it or not, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
In two thousand and seven, I imagined Kirk Crankett was here still, and they were.
I'm sorry.
They were ahead of you.
But what we're doing is to establish a new tower.
We're just establishing it by consent.
We want that sentence taken out of there.
Is, is that whereas important having that?
Just scratch that little paragraph.
I was just taking that from the statute.
Cause it says establishing it, right?
It just says you may establish it by your order of the board. If you feel more comfortable without the appointment of a viewer and just, without any other proceedings, that's fine, it's, it's just following the language of the statute, so a viewer was not necessary in this instance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
It wasn't, it's not, in, in this instance, but probably was in two thousand and seven. I mean, I think the only thing that was missed was the resolution for. So they went through the proper procedures following probably the, the other statute that requires a viewer.
So we just scratched that, that paragraph.
So what I have, pursuant to Wyoming State Statute, section twenty-four three one oh eight, this public county road may be established by the order of the Board of County Commissioners of Weston County, Wyoming, without any other proceedings. How's that?
Understood.
Definitely.
I made those changes on emailing it to Becky.
We got a new truck last week. Filthy, it was a Hutter's truck, we just traded straight over our Z twenty-eight for that, I've been spending hours cleaning that thing. Hours, in the heat.
Five-minute recess, what she compares that?
Thank you, thank you.
Two flasks I found while cleaning up, but full of Southern Comfort. It made sense.
Yeah.
Southern discomfort.
Oh, I love Southern Comfort myself, if it's nice and cold.
We just did a five-minute recess.
Uh-huh.
I gotta go to the bathroom.
Lathered.
I think it feels great in here.
I think it feels wonderful in here.
It's getting colder. Excuse me, eight degrees. It's been cold.
If you don't like, you don't, you don't like the cold, you're living in the wrong place.
I'm not getting up, shut the fan off, shut the window.
I just kind of color coordinated tonight. Put this baby to sleep. Looking at the board, looks like everything's cleaned up, like we discussed on that.
I would make a motion for the board's signature on resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Resolution Board of County Commissioners, Weston County, establishing Barton County Road, also designated Weston County Road seventy-five.
Say again. Motion properly seconded, any discussion? This is humor.
Sorry. Are you planning an auction?
Oh.
Call the new road, cause forget.
No discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Very good.
That's it, Dan, now you're responsible for all the maintenance on that road.
Hey, we have a.
Can we get you a gift bag?
Letter from Ms. Lindsey Mooton. To Weston County, she's interested in being appointed to the Weston County Fair Board. I recently moved out of my house and I'm writing to express my interest in your open secretary position on the fair board as a part of a fair kid.
No, I already asked, that's, I guess what she then was. He was the fair board secretary, I explained to them that you guys don't have fun positions. At first, that just fair secretary, and I had her put secretary, or I had her do a new letter, this is what she gave for Nancy.
As a past fair kid, I have a great interest in helping fairgrounds to be productive and useful in the community. Local fairgrounds and their events were a memorable part of my childhood, and I'd love to help provide the kids in this community with the same joys. I used to be a teacher in Wisconsin, and I have adequate office and communications skills to offer to this position. I've so far enjoyed moving to this community and look forward to being more involved. I'll appear from you soon. Please let me know if there's any other information you would need. Thank you for considering me as a potential board member. I guess, beans, is there's not another person putting in for the appointment? Would be nice if we could see them or visit with them for a bit, but I guess in this circumstance. I don't know if I tell you who the board is, whatever.
They have two rules.
Two.
Make motion to appoint Lindsay Gutten to the Weston County Fair Board. Second.
Motion properly seconded to appoint Lindsay Gutten to the fair board. Discussion, yes?
I would like to have my fair board come and if they vetted them and maybe sit here and tell us that they think they would be a good fit. I think sometimes when we just put people on and they haven't vetted them to see if, you know. Obviously, somebody, ask somebody else, but if we had a record that they went to the fair board and said, hey, I'd really like to be here, and most people pay and interview them. I think that would help us.
The fair board got the letter. I don't know if that matters. When they were here, Watson.
In my humble opinion, I could hand it to the fair board. This is my suggestion.
Yeah, that's good. Favorite appointing Ms. Gutten to the Weston County Fair Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nope.
Chairman's signature on Martin's single land division.
The finding and voting reported in before them. They have approved that.
You really have nothing to do with it, right, other than?
We have final.
Final approval of it.
And, Mr. Chairman, once again, it'd be nice if the finding is on the board with Taylor presented to us. This is a simple one, but when we get into convoluted ones, it'd be nice to have.
You, or you just provide a letter?
They've done all of that. They've done all of the stuff there. Things that they need to, finding and voting, all the authority.
Does Bob want to be in here for that?
I miss him. He thought he was gonna have to be with me, right? But I let him know that landing is only a good. He's already sitting. I'm sure he'll be following his feelings.
Just something like this board would need to know is as long as it other statutes and following free procedure land subdivision. Followed them. Same rate. Those folks. Follow through on that.
Make motion to approve the chairman's signature on Martin's single land division.
Second. Property seconded. Discussion.
I would like to take the suggestion by Commissioner Wagner that we have a letter from the board, just for the sake of documentation. When those kinds of things.
That's a good idea. I think you've got a board here that isn't necessarily up to date on everything. There are applicable laws there, and if they have the checklist incorporated with their map. You ask, create, is that something that they could do in the future, or?
Because I went to the effort and making that checklist, it'd be nice for us to see.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Or if they were going to do it in person, do you ever?
Even better.
Yeah. Motion properly seconded on the board for the chairman's signature on Martin's single land division. All those favorite, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Witness coordinator.
My man.
Morning.
We come with good news?
Yes, 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 yes.
Like that? So Stephanie had been approved for how much additional, thirty-two thousand?
Let me, let me just hand you this. Current. And I can read this email real quick from Megan Hughes. And she says, in order to spend down the state dollars that reverted in twenty twenty-five, I have been adjusting a few awards, hopefully the most painless way possible. Attached, you'll find an amended award notice where I have replaced a portion of your VOKA award with increased victim witness and surcharge awards. To account for the inconvenience and extra work, I have provided your agency with a modest increase to your overall award. Please review it, which I did with Mike, and he approved it. And so alls I had to do was go back and do all the paperwork, which I did. And as you can see, the previous and the current one, that we accepted the award, the deputy attorney signed it. And so we do get an increase in the victim witness funding stream and the surcharge stream. We get a little bit less in the VOKA, Victims Against Crime Act funding stream. But what, that's a good thing, because the match that the county had to come up with was eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty cents. Now, we only have to come up with three thousand sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. So we are plus in that account, that matching count, by five thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-five cents. And that's a great thing. We can leave it in there. Or, because like I said, it's the match fund. And so, we're coming before you. Mike signed it. I already turned it in to make sure that it's okay with you guys, that we accept everything.
Well, we're gonna have to do a revision of the budget for that amount?
So I'm gonna have to have Amber come in because these are land items that she's gonna have to be, you know. Because it's a lot of different accounts, not just one account. There's four of them.
So we're ahead by a thousand dollars, right? Yeah.
Oh, we're ahead.
Plus the five on the match.
Yeah.
We saved the five on the match, plus we paid.
Right. Plus, they were gonna pay for all of my insurance. And they approved for a two hundred and twenty-five dollar a month to pay for all of my insurance. But it, it just, it was just couldn't get worked out through the county clerk's office. So I just said, you know what, just, just forget it. I rewrote the amended budget. I gave back the two hundred and twenty-five times twelve, and I put it back into the grant. So plus, we have all of that, two, three thousand dollars of that that goes back in here. So we're, we'll be ahead quite a bit.
So it is my feeling that the grant part should go back into the general, if we're not matching a grant for as much. Is that what we're doing?
Yes. I.
Okay. Can you, because Steph said that she's wanting to change accounts, because she got more money in there. Will you explain which accounts those will be?
So it's the one-twenty's accounts? So one-twenty?
Not, not one-hundred point. Except for the match account.
Yeah, I, yeah.
That one will have to be readjusted to, since we only made the three thousand and C in there, so the
So it's the attorney VOKA, victim witness, and the victim witness surcharge.
So the VOKA one, that first one ending in zero six two four, started at thirty-seven five hundred and is going down to twelve thousand two seventy-five? And then the witness one started out at twenty-three nine sixty-one and is going up to the forty-three one thirty-eight? And then the surcharge is going from four thousand three hundred and thirty-three to fourteen thousand five eighty-seven? The match account, which was what we pulled just retirement at. That was like what our match was, I guess. And it was nine three seventy-five. They dropped it down to three thousand sixty-eight seventy-five.
Which won't have enough in it to pay her retirement, will it?
No. Three thousand is not enough to pay for her retirement.
So see, that's where lies the problem with all this. This is a hundred percent for her stuff, and there's not enough now in these accounts that they're adjusting.
There will be enough.
No, there won't. It'll come out.
So the amended one went down over two thousand dollars. So they're giving less money is how I read it. I don't know what else is going on.
Yeah, it went from sixty-five seven nine four.
I mean, it's just in the match account that went in.
The total funding went up, what, thirty thousand bucks?
It, it went up quite a bit, because I also gave up some of my. Oh, so for just your, the award portion went up. But what they're saying, the ma, or the total, when I added them both together, it's gone down. Well, that's the match account that will have the fifty-one hundred in there. Do you know, I use also a kind, it's, the match was nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I use a kind soft match of volunteers, so that the county didn't have to come all of that. And now we just have to come up with a match of three thousand sixty-eight, but we still have. So where's the rest of that gonna come out of? We still have. For retirement. We still have eighty-two forty-nine in that account. Not three thousand? That's all we need to match. You see what I mean? That's all we need to match, but we still have eight thousand three hundred and forty-nine in that account. So we're matching more.
I think what she's trying to say is if we're paying the life insurance, that has to be in that account.
It is.
Retirement.
Retirement.
Okay.
It still is. It, it won't be moved. That's what I'm saying. We can keep it in that account. The eighty-two forty-nine.
But I thought the reason.
We can't, because it says that this amount is only three if the match.
So it would go down to three.
Have to physically have that dollar amount in there.
Okay, so the five thousand one hundred dollars.
Gets taken out. So then we have to have that five thousand from in there.
So.
We have to, we can only have this three thousand, because we have to match.
Can't we just move it? From where?
From where?
No, no, the five thousand one hundred and eighty that's in the match account. Can't we just move it to a different account? But that's a reason it's in there, because it's from here.
It's from here.
But they're not saying we have to have it. It's not gonna be in there. It's gonna go, what, go to the general fund?
Or the general fund. The only amount that will be in the match now will be the three thousand.
So here's the confusion that's getting here. Your, the county is paying for your health insurance, your, your retirement, the whole thing. Somehow, if it's granted to this county, we have to put it in that account somehow. If we're putting just in a line item, then it's, it's getting pulled and something else is getting pulled from it. Do you understand?
I do.
So that money has to go back into that account. This is where, in the budget process, that's why we need to know. Because if it just gets put in a line item, then it's spendable. But the spending is, when she goes to pay the, the retirement, is coming out of this account, not this account.
Correct. So that I know the state program reimburses the county for everything but my retirement. Is that correct? So can't that money still be used for my retirement, because that was obligation on counties to get the seventy thousand dollars?
The only obligation was the match. And now we're not required, we're only required to do the three thousand dollar amount.
Which isn't gonna pay your retirement?
No. Okay. Because it's six hundred and some dollars a month. Six eighty-seven forty-five, yeah.
What I understood is that the money could be moved.
That's what I understood from the state, the money could be moved.
Moved from where?
But it's county money.
It's not.
So how do, how can they say we can just move that?
Not following, you're saying it's county money?
The match part?
Is it?
Is county money.
So are you saying that part of this award, we could go put in our general fund? Because that doesn't seem like.
No, I just thought because the county is paying for the retirement and not getting reversed, reversed for that, it can still come out of that amount that's left over.
It can't without going into the general.
Well, because originally, it was this amount. That was gonna pay for retirement. That's what we had to match. Now they're saying we only have to match this amount. So after this amount, where's that retirement gonna come out of? Because we're only gonna put three thousand in that match account. Because that's what they said we have to pay. Right. So where's the rest of the retirement gonna come from? So if we don't have to match it, if it's gonna. I just understood it came out of the same matching stream for retirement. But, but it's only gonna be three thousand, because the grant to what the state's adjusting.
You know, is that five thousand dollars or whatever?
That's what I thought.
Retirement out of.
That's not what the agreement is. You can't just.
Samuel Todd. This is, this is Brett.
Hello.
May I just hold on this, if, if I can? You can leave the match. You guys can leave the match now exactly what it is. That's, we have to have at least about 3,000 in the match, but you can leave the full amount in that matching account. That's the county money. You guys can do whatever you want with that. We just have to have at least that amount for the funds.
So then, I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to match more than what they say we have to at least match?
That's what the agreement, that's the whole issue.